Please note that the hearing is being recorded and transcribed by a sonographer. Thank you all again for taking the time to attend our virtual and in-person public hearing. We appreciate that you have made this a priority and are here with us this evening. This public hearing is also currently being livestreamed on YouTube, and the recording of this hearing will be available on NITSHA's website after the hearing has concluded. In accordance with Section 5A of the United States Housing Act of 1937 as amended, housing authorities are required to develop, with review and input from residents and the general public, an annual plan for the coming year, and gather input on the plan from residents and the general public. Federal law allows a public housing authority to modify or amend its annual plan. Significant amendments to the plan must also be shared in a public forum to provide residents and the general public the opportunity to comment. On June 15th, 2022, NITSHA released the draft fiscal year 2023 annual plan and the draft significant amendment to the fiscal year 2022 annual PHA plan for public review. This amendment is for the fiscal year 2022 capital plan and five-year action plan. The executive summaries, draft plan, and draft significant amendment are available in English, Spanish, Chinese, and Russian on NITSHA's website, and also available for review in the lobby area. As part of the annual plan and significant amendment process, NITSHA met with members of the Resident Advisory Board, RAB, and Citywide Council of Presidents, CECOP, five times between March and June of this year. The draft fiscal year 2023 annual plan and the draft significant amendment were also shared with all Resident Advisory Board delegates and to the Resident Association presidents. I would like to thank the 10 members of the Citywide Council of Presidents and their RAB delegates representing each of the CECOP's 10 districts and including one Section 8 resident. We encourage residents and the public to provide written comments on the draft fiscal year 2023 annual plan and the draft fiscal year 2022 significant amendment. You may provide comments via email, fax, regular mail, or here at the public hearing this evening. The purpose of this public hearing is to obtain the views, comments, and recommendations of the public on the draft fiscal year 2022/2023 annual plan and the draft significant amendment to the fiscal year 2022 annual plan. The draft plans and draft amendment are not final and will be modified before they are submitted to HUD. Please understand, however, that this evening is not intended as a forum for a verbal exchange. NITSHA representatives will not engage in discussions with the speakers, nor will they respond to questions. They are present to hear your comments about the draft plan and draft significant amendment. Distributing materials is not allowed in the auditorium. If you have leaflets or brochures you would like to share, please leave them at the resource table in the lobby. Resource tables offering information on programs and opportunities that may be of interest to you are also set up in the lobby. At this time, I would like to introduce our NITSHA board members. Greg Russ, Chair and CEO. Victor A. Gonzalez, Vice Chair. Joseph Adams, Member. Paula Gavin, Member. Magaly D. Austin, Member. Emma Wolf, Member. We are also joined by our Deputy COO, Marvin Walton, and Seth Lynch, Deputy Inspector from the NYPD. We will now hear brief remarks from our Chair and CEO, Greg Russ.
Good. This is on. Good. That's helpful. First off, I just want to say on a personal note, it's just really great to see everyone. I realize we're still unfolding all this together, but it's just a treat to actually have a chance to not only see the folks that I work with all the time, but see residents and advocates and representatives who bring their weight and their comments to this meeting this evening. So I'm thankful for that, just as a way of starting and just as a way of saying that we're going to continue to engage the city like this. There's going to be a significant number of meetings this fall, and I'll explain a little bit about that, but it's really great to see everyone. So I want to thank you all for being here. I want to thank our dedicated board members for their work, the NITSHA staff for all the work that they do, including putting this event together. I want to thank the community advocates, elected officials. I want to thank the members of the Resident Advisory Board and the CECOP and the Tenant Association leadership. Operating subsidy is for public housing, and we will issue bonds against that extra income for capital improvements, just like the Transit Authority or Department of Education or cities do to finance their big infrastructure projects. We have the ability with the trust legislation to hire better vendors, to complete high-quality work faster. We do not have to take the low-bid vendor. We have choices. The trust also gives residents a true voice. Residents can choose whether to move forward with the trust. They can help select the vendors for the renovations work, and they can serve on the committees that will check the quality of the work. It's an investment in the community as well as our buildings. And if we think about this, these properties have been neglected, neglected in the most shameful way, to go as long as we have gone without putting major money into these buildings. And if we can raise this money, not only is it going to change the apartment, not only is it going to change the common area, the building envelope, the rest of the buildings, it's going to have the power to change the community. It's going to have that power because when you bring this kind of capital into community, opportunity is going to pop up. Some of them we can see, and some of them we can't see, but it's going to be there. And our hope is that we'll have residents, adults, kids, others, who can seize that and be part of that lift. These billions of dollars investment will include energy-efficient technologies. We're on the cusp of a whole new field of things that people can learn. We're going to need mechanics that can fix these technologies. We're going to need people who know how to install them. We're going to need people who know how to read the gauges. All of that is possible. In addition, we're going to have jobs and job training for residents and others across the line of work that might be available, everything from professional services to carpenters or plasterers. The improvements will provide residents with safe and healthy homes, and it will help us lift the burden of never-ending repairs. One of the problems we all face is doing the repair in a unit when you fix a leak knowing that the whole line in the high-rise needs to be replaced. That's a tough choice because the money to do the high-rise lines needs to be there. We're going to work with residents and advocates to incorporate your feedback into the updated trust legislation, and we're going to build this institution together. There'll be residents serving on the trust board. Four of the nine members are residents. We're going to be publishing draft resident voting requirements by mid-October for public comment and final requirements for voting by mid-December. Remember, residents have a choice to come into the trust, to do RAD, or to keep the status quo. While we transform these buildings, we're also working hard to transform NITSHA as an organization. We have been reforming the departments. We recently merged our capital projects and real estate departments. Comprehensive modernization teams are being put into place. We have a new asset and capital management division. We're going to create a single pipeline of renovation projects that we can do more efficiently and through stronger partnerships with staff, residents, and other stakeholders. We recently launched a tracker on our website that allows everyone to see the details and status of each capital project. And we're also carrying out a set of changes that will enhance the management of those projects and help us meet our HUD agreement targets. For example, we've replaced more than 77 boilers so far, surpassing our target of 70. We're surpassing the full target using PACT and other means in the next few years. We plan to complete 14 more elevator replacements this year and another 137 by 2023, getting us closer to the targets in the agreement. Through PACT and RAD, we've replaced 141 elevators. So you know better than anyone how desperately we need a new way forward. And you know that transforming these homes, these apartments, is that way. The trust is critical to this. The investments the trust will bring in the properties and the investments that NITSHA must make and is compelled to make in the change of our organization. Together, it's our hope, we're going to be the biggest housing infrastructure project in the history of the country. That's what we can do together. That's what we can do. It's incredibly powerful to think about. It's in the future, and we got to go after it, but it's there. We look forward to hearing your comments tonight, to continuing to learn from you, and to work with you to transform and preserve public housing so it's better for those living there now and better and sustainable for those that live there in the future. So I want to thank you for being here this evening and look forward to hearing your comments. And like I said, thumb through the document. There's some interesting things in there. Don't be put off by the format, but take a look at it and understand what the significant amendment means and what the annual plan means. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. We hope that many of you will have an opportunity to share your comments about the draft fiscal year 2023 annual plan and the draft significant amendment to the fiscal year 2022 annual plan. Now I will review the commentary process to ensure this event runs smoothly. Attendees who submitted a request to speak either in person today or via email prior to the hearing will be called on to speak in the order of submission, alternating between in-person and virtual attendees. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to speak. You will see a countdown clock here in the theater and on the screen via Zoom. Please keep an eye on the clock at the center of the stage so that you will know when your time limit is approaching. We expect a high volume of speakers and want to make sure that everyone has a chance to share their comments, so please adhere to the time limit. If you have additional comments or you have an issue that concerns only you or your apartment, you can fill out a resident comment card available at the sign-in tables in the lobby that will be collected by NITSHA staff. Or you may type your name, development, address, apartment number, contact information, and comment in the Zoom Q&amp;A box, or submit written comments via email to annualplancomments@nichah.nyc.gov. Staff from our Operations and Property Management Departments are joining us this evening and will be reviewing comments as received. If you did not submit a request to speak in advance of this hearing and you wish to speak, you may fill out a speaker slip, which is available at the check-in tables, or use the raised-hand function in Zoom, or press *9 on your phone to request to speak. The order of speakers will be: individuals who signed up in advance of the start of this hearing, individuals who submitted a speaker slip in person here today, and individuals with their hands raised on Zoom. For those on Zoom, when called on to speak, please ensure your microphone is not muted. If you are dialing in by phone, you will call the last four digits of your phone number, and you will need to press *6 to unmute yourself. If you are not responsive or no longer wish to speak when your name or phone number is called, I will move on to the next speaker. Please remember that we are here to hear your comments on the draft plan and draft significant amendment. Demeaning, vulgar, or discriminatory language, as well as personal comments or attacks on resident representatives, public attendees or NITSHA staff will not be tolerated. We reserve the right to immediately move to the next speaker in line if comments are deemed as inappropriate. Please be considerate of your neighbors and follow these instructions. Let us begin with comments from attendees who submitted a request to speak. When I call on you, please state your name and your development or affiliation, then share your comment. For our attendees here in the theater, please use "Speak only from the microphones" at the front of the auditorium. If you need assistance, please raise your hand, and someone will come to you with a microphone. For our Zoom attendees, when called, please unmute yourself and begin speaking. When you are finished speaking and your time is up, please mute yourself again so that other speakers can be heard. As a reminder, you will have three minutes. We encourage residents and the public to provide written comments on the draft annual plan and the draft significant amendment. Comments may be submitted through September 2, 2022. We will now call up the first two speakers here in person. Danny Barber, Chair of the Citywide Council of Presidents, Damali Rashid, Mariner's Harbor. Please approach the microphone. Raise a hand if you need assistance. Okay, we will move on to the next two speakers. Taffee Williams, Gompers. Tahisha Field, Two Bridges, URA. Ms. Wu, can you please mute? Is everybody supposed to be tall?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Aixa Torres. First of all, I am a resident in public housing. I am the president of Alfred E. Smith Houses Resident Association. I am the newly-elected chair for Manhattan South District of Council Presidents Committee. So I sit on CECOP. And I am, more importantly, here to say absolutely no to the trust. As everyone knows, for those of you who don't know, for the last two years, I have been, with no offense to anyone on the dice, I have been asking the elected officials that I want to be the chairperson of NITSHA. I feel that NITSHA needs to be run by residents, for residents, and that we, the residents, are entitled to know what is the reality of it. I am beyond angry. I have lost a board member, even though for five years I have been complaining about cancer killing the residents in Smith Houses because we're the only development that sits on ground zero. And so I want to say this and say this with all my conviction. This trust cannot happen. It would be detrimental to every resident in public housing, and I speak from the heart. And every elected official who has acted on our behalf to say that it's okay, it's not okay. You have a day of reckoning at the election day. Let it be known. And so I just want for the record that I wrote a letter to President Biden complaining about the series of how this has transgressed in terms of giving the residents the information that's necessary in the middle of a pandemic. Needless to say, I want to congratulate and say thank you to every resident leader in public housing who stepped up to the plate to make sure that our residents got food, got PPEs, and to the elected officials who supported the resident leadership. This cannot happen. I am totally opposed, and I speak on behalf of the residents that I represent in Smith and the residents that I represent on the CECOP. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
I've been notified that we have Mr. Daniel Barber joining via Zoom. We will have him share his comment next.
Good evening. Good evening, and it's a pleasure to be here with you all virtually to give comments on the annual plan. NITSHA is submitting this plan moving forward, and although that they have changed in some areas, it still has its challenges as an agency and has slighted its residents of the best possible opportunity at a sustainable life. Through the courts, NITSHA was supposed to be able to provide a better operational plan, and has fallen short and has been through criticism from the residents, and especially myself, with the proposed blueprint plan in the trust legislation as the direction for the future. With the severe decline in congressional funding and the plans NITSHA chooses to proceed with has caused bigger separations with residents and the authority. As the Citywide Council of Presidents Chairman, I have been vocal, and I have provided written statements as to the non-support of the trust legislation and the reservations that I still have, and have accepted the role as a leader, and I support all the residents of the New York City Housing Authority. NITSHA still has a lot of corrections and work to do when it comes to lead, mold, and even the placement of those waiting to be a resident of NITSHA. There is still a strong need of improvement when it comes to heating and hot water because this is an issue that has plagued the residents for years and still does. For years, NITSHA has been lax in keeping its property up to HUD's standards and only showed the major concern only when it came to FAR's inspections that are administered by HUD. This lack of better judgment to stay on top of the matter ultimately led to poor scores from the inspection. Although elevators and bad lighting and extensive length of scaffolding in many developments still poses a major need for a better plan for replacement and repairs without the long extensive processes to bring betterment to the residents and their safety. This raises the question, with the extensive raise in crime citywide, the need to modernize the CCTV systems is a must, from 1080 pixels to the K-series, 2K, 3K, 4K, and 5K systems. There is a great need for Congress to really look at the needs of its constituents, whom so happen to be the residents of public housing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We will call on the next two in-person speakers, Douglas Covington and Fanta Brown-Lincoln. Do we have Douglas Covington, Fanta Brown? We will move on to the next two Zoom speakers. We have Ms. Brown and Russell Taylor.
Ms. Brown, you're unmuted.
Ms. Brown, we're ready for your comment. Do we have Russell Taylor?
Hello, can you hear me? Can you guys hear me?
Please proceed.
Yes. Good evening to all NITSHA representatives, residents of public housing, and supporters of keeping in perpetuity Section 9 housing, public housing. My name is Russell. I live at 830 East City Avenue. I'm a lifelong New York City and NITSHA resident. I am also with React for Environmental Justice, a community activist and political canvasser, and recently elected county committee in the 69th Assembly of District. I also would like to thank groups like community-based organizations like Residents of Preserve Public Housing, Safe Section 9, and SECA, and our champions in New York City Council and New York State Legislatures that oppose the passing of the trust and understood its legislation, gravity, and ramifications for the future of Section 9 Low/Moderate Income Public Housing. NITSHA is a state and public entity with HUD's federal funding and legislation that governs all PHAs across America, and because of its location is in the George Washington of New York. As a resident of public housing, we have faced 40 years of disinvestment and currently go through gentrification and privatization of our institutions. We are seeing private development that is not affordable, and if Robert Moses is alive again, then this is a land grab and under the pretense of betterment. again, then this is a land grab and under the pretense of betterment for public housing residents, no good deed goes unpun- unpunished. So, uh, we oppose, we oppose the, uh, blue, uh, this plan, uh, to use, number one, using our homes as collateral in the legislation in case of loan defaults. Also, as a political canvasser, uh, we oppose, uh, the development vote, uh, vote quorum that should not be at a minimum but set at 75% of residents and N I T A needs to do a better, uh, uh, job at physically, uh, uh, talking about this plan. And number three, no pledging to third party in case of defaults, and if the state and city wants to move on with this transformation plan, then put your money where your mouth is and in writing that you, in case of default, will cure the default and stop the foreclosure. We are the only former low moderate income public housing in America, uh, in America, and Section 9 must remain 100% public and perpetually for all who that need it. Thank you very much. I yield the floor.
Thank you. We will try Mrs. Lorraine Brown again. Mrs. Brown, you are unmuted. Please proceed with sharing your comment. Okay. We will move on to the next two in-person speakers. Do we have Mohammed Uden Waldhouses? Taliba Thorpe Ringle Houses? Carmen Leon East River? Howa McPherson? Thank you. We'll proceed with the next two speakers signed up via Zoom. Judith Campbell? And we have a representative Stanley Isaacs from Stanley Isaacs. Judith Campbell? Do we have Judith Campbell? Ms. Campbell, you can unmute yourself. Do we have the representative from Stanley Isaacs? Do we have speaking?
Hello?
Okay. We will move on to the next speaker signed up via Zoom, Linda Bolton.
Hello?
Hi.
This is Judith Campbell.
Please proceed.
Uh, sorry, I was having issues with my phone.
Thank you. Please proceed, your time will start now. Okay, we will need to move forward.
Yes, hello?
Hi.
Yes, um, is this about the annual plan for N I T A?
Yes, please proceed with your comment.
Um, I would need to know, as far as families that are displaced due to, um, their apartment being deemed uninhabitable, what was N I T A's plan in implementing something that would assist those families to have a temporary emergency place to stay, especially if they are disabled? And, um, their apartment, like I said, is uninhabitable. Are there any contingency plans put in place to house these families temporarily? That was one of my questions. And then another question was, what will N I T A do as far as making sure that repairs are done in a timely manner so that a family would not be disrupted entirely when, um, just trying to live basically and, and do like what they're supposed to do as far as work and, um, their living arrangements are concerned?
Thank you for your comment. We will now move on to the next two in-person speakers. Edward Lee? Ika Smith Boulevard Houses? Ramona Ferreira Mitchell Houses? Shaleen Stewart Farragut Houses?
Yep, thank you. Uh, hi, so my name is Guatuque Ini Inaru, and my colonial name is Ramona. I am a resident at Mitchell Houses, and I am the founder of Save Section 9. I am here to express my disappointment in the actions that N I T A, under the leadership of Greg Russ, has undertaken over the last three years. Tenants like myself have been ignored, overlooked, and undermined. As a result, we have formed groups like Residents to Preserve Public Housing and Save Section 9 to do the work that you are unwilling or unable to do. This summer, we have been lobbying, something that N I T A has said is impossible and something that could never lead to the result of us actually getting the funding that we need for public housing in New York to survive under Section 9. We are doing what you are incapable of doing. We are meeting with congressional representatives across the country because Save Section 9 has now been invited into Memphis, North Carolina, Boston, and California. If we fall in New York, we will disappoint our ancestors like my grandmother, who came to this country illegally and who cried on the day that she was issued her apartment. When she first heard about the plan for the trust or the blueprint, or whatever you want to call it, she asked me, what are we gonna do if this goes through? And I said to her, it's not. And every single day, I lose sleep, I sacrifice my health, my personal relationships, and my well-being. Because although you killed grandma by not properly cleaning our buildings at Mitchell Houses, by not responding to the tickets from alarmed tenants that told you that we were gonna die at a higher rate from COVID, that we were gonna be infected at a higher rate from COVID, and the statistics prove it. So I'm gonna keep fighting until I can't. Because my grandmother loved public housing. And when she died, the day before, she said to me, "I'm just glad we've been fighting to get you on the lease." Because she knew that there was no other place in the city that raised me where I would be able to live with dignity. And that's what you're taking away. And every report on privatization and conversion proves that you will displace tenants, that we will lose our homes and our communities.
Thank you. We will try Mrs. Lorraine Brown again. Mrs. Brown, if you are with us, you aren't unmuted, you may proceed with sharing your comment. Do we have Mrs. Brown with us? We will need to move on. We will call the next two speakers on Zoom. Virginia Torres and Oma Cruz. Ms. Torres, you will be unmuted, please proceed with sharing your comment. Do we have Oma Cruz? We will move on to the next Zoom speaker, Carrie Scott. Ms. Scott, you can unmute yourself. We will move on to the in-person speakers. Grace Lino Erlington Fulton Houses? Brenda Temple Ocean Bay?
That's good. Good evening, everyone. I'm glad to be here in front of the panel, and I hope that all of our statements here will resonate with you in your hearts and in your minds to give you the willingness to do the next right thing. That's what I pray for every day. And I'm here to really speak to the residents. My comrades, my name is Brenda Temple. I live at Oceanside Houses in New York, in N I T A Development in the Rockaways. I am the second vice president of the Oceanside Houses. RAD Pact and the Housing Preservation Trust are three programs that use investors to raise private money for N I T A to make repairs. Call it privatization, call it public-private partnership, call it what you like. But whatever you call it, one thing is clear, public housing will be run by private developers. How? N I T A is converting Section 9 public housing to Section 8 to attract investment. Yes, we want repairs to be done, which was much neglected, intentionally even. We all know that what it is like to live in housing that poisons us. But we also know public housing is the only affordable housing. And under Section 8, when we can't pay our rent or can only make partial payment, we are evicted. Investors, private managers, and developers will want to increase rents where possible, and they're doing that right now in Ocean Bay. And in the case of the Housing Preservation Trust, if N I T A fails to pay back its loans, investors will be able to convert our homes to market rate rents. None of the details of this are worked out with our participation. We know that N I T A doesn't enforce its rules. Most residents still don't know what is going on. What can we do? We have always fought for self-determination, for self-governance, or resident management. If we are going to build power to chart our costs, to protect public housing, we must gather to voice our wants and our needs. We don't have to, that, we don't have to have all the answers right now, but we will create them. N I T A and HUD make the rules, and therefore they rule. So you all know how complicated it was even to register and participate in this, uh, meeting. So we must gather in the streets, on the steps of City Hall, at N I T A offices, in numbers, thousands, that will have the electors and the city officials in shock and ask, what do we want and what we must have? They must have the willingness because they do have the money. This is hard and scary, but it is a path on which we must walk. Ask your neighbors and your friends, do you want to keep Section 9 public housing and keep federal housing protections? Do you want to participate in managing your own buildings and developments? That is the conversation that we must have. We say no to Russ because everywhere he goes, public housing is destroyed, and we say no to the trust.
Thank you.
People of a profit!
We will now move on to the next two speakers via Zoom. Maria Forbes, followed by Teresa Scott.
Hello, everyone. Many blessings and peace be unto you. This is Maria Forbes from Claymont Consolidated. I'm the T A president for a section called Clay Avenue Tenants Association. There are 750 units up here that have been depending on funding for capital from the state, the federal government, and the city, but to no avail has our call been answered. Explanation of this blueprint. Stabilization under this preservation trust and organizational transformation. I cannot even begin to understand that the chairman asked us to read, read through those books. If they didn't finish their last meeting with the citywide council and the resident advisory boards until June, what made them expect us to read it? Yesterday, I, I just got my package yesterday, let me state that. So I don't know who's at fault for that. But I want to say that we as residents, tenant association presidents, should stop entertaining these family days, hamburgers, cookouts, and start establishing some relationships with some attorneys because the N I T A attorneys have been at work since Greg Russ got here. They work 72 hours a day, 365 days a year, in order to create the plans that they have been creating against us. And if we do not stop entertaining a family day, a bookbag drive, and all of those other things to help our residents, I don't know what else that's gonna happen to us. The description of this comprehensive modernization plan is very dangerous as well. If Mr. Russ does not understand that the RAD, the trust, and the modernization, which is under the city, all three of the relocations of the residents must have the same plan. If they don't have the same plan, you're gonna have one tenant in Queens and another tenant in Staten Island, and nobody is gonna be relocated back to their homes. So it is so very, very imperative that we understand that this plan needs to work for the residents in having this addressed immediately before the vote goes in, Mr. Russ, before it goes in, to having residents select what choice they want. The plan to relocate these tenants back into their homes once all of this privatization, RAD, and trust begins. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have Teresa Scott via Zoom?
Hi. Hi, I'm Teresa Lorraine Scott. I live in Bradford, New York, and I'm part of Save, okay. Hi. Hi, I'm Teresa... Hello. I am Teresa Lorraine Scott, and I'm part of Redford House. I am part of Save Section 9. It is a disgrace what you're trying to do to us, because y'all did not make sure that we had this plan in time. I am a disabled person who's partially blind, and y'all did not make the reading of this annual plan for anyone to understand. You need to have a college degree in order to... So that's the first problem. And I believe you made sure that we didn't know that, because you didn't give us the information and time enough for us to be able to even let us know even how to read this thing or even understand it. Second of all, the reason why we don't have money is because y'all take the money, y'all do what y'all want to do. People get... We have gotten all kind of work done on here. There has not been no accountability to even make sure if the work was done. So how can we trust you to make a decision for our lives when you don't even make sure with the money that you are given? Not only that, you have seniors who are freezing in these homes. You don't even make sure that they have proper heating. You say you gave us brand-new boilers, but the boilers that people got, they don't even work. So what is the purpose of you giving us all these things, and you're not going to make sure that they work properly? Not only that, I reject anything that you offer to us, because you do not care about us. You're about making money. Far Rockaway is a big place and it's full with a whole bunch, and you're just trying to kick us out of our home. And let me tell you something, I love my home. If I'm homeless, I have no place to go. I have no place to go if you kick me out of my home. And if you change from Save Section 9, I'm in trouble. We live with gun violence every day. You don't put no gun violence or no kind of gun violence program. They come by. And not only that, you don't really have a proper information to even know what's going on. The tenants, the residents, I was a board member, I never heard of some of this stuff until recently. So you're not even making sure that we get the information. You don't even make sure that we know what is going on in our community to make sure that we can survive and live. And yet you tell us you want to give us some new plan that does not include us. Why can't we make a decision and a choice about what we get? Why should you make that decision? You come live with us. I dare you. I invite you to come live in my apartment. I'll appear a bear for you to come live in my apartment, Mr. Russ. Any of y'all, come live with me for a night. Come live with me for a week, and see how it feels to live in NYCHA. See how it feels to have guns outside your door. See how it feels to have rats and roaches when you know you're keeping your apartment clean. See how it feels to don't know how you're going to make it if your elevator's going to work today when you have a wheelchair. Come live with me for a week and see how it feels. I dare you.
Thank you.
I dare some of y'all officials to come live with us. I dare y'all to come live with us. I dare y'all to. I dare y'all to come live with us. Come live with us.
Thank you. We will now call on the next two in-person speakers, Russell Taylor, 8:30 Amsterdam Avenue, Jesse Fields, Committee for Independent Community Action,
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dr. Jesse Fields. I'm a medical doctor, and I'm an activist with the Committee for Independent Community Action. And I'm so proud and honored to be here with the residents and activists who live in public housing and the people who are fighting for public housing. I'm against the Public Housing Preservation Trust, because it endangers the homes' health and safety of public housing residents. I'm a medical doctor in the Harlem community. Many of my patients live in New York City public housing. I've seen the health impacts of NYCHA's mismanagement and outright negligence, the failure to inspect for lead in apartments, the lack of repairs for leaks and asthma-causing mold in the apartments, the failure to maintain utilities such as heat in the winter, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. These conditions have been seriously detrimental to generations of NYCHA residents, and we've heard that again tonight. The Public Housing Preservation Trust legislation allows the trust to issue bonds to finance renovations of up to $10 billion of debt, and 25,000 units are permitted to be transferred to the trust. That's over $200,000 in debt financing per unit. The money is to be accessed through tenant protection vouchers by transferring from public housing, Section 9, to Section 8. This debt financing must be paid back by NYCHA, who risks, this is a risk, to default on the loans, putting the homes of NYCHA residents in jeopardy. This debt financing is fiscally irresponsible and should not be permitted by HUD. Many households are behind in their rent due to the financial crisis from the pandemic. Under the trust, residents will lose what they have in federal housing protections against evictions and rent increases. The alternative to the trust is to listen to the residents, listen to the residents, and allow residents of public housing to manage their developments, because the residents care about their families, their homes, and their communities, rather than allowing the trust to proceed. HUD should work directly with the residents and support resident management, and we have to all come together to make sure that happens, because we care about our people, as has been so powerfully expressed tonight. Why is it that 98% to 99% of the residents are against the trust? Why is that? You have to ask that question. The residents who live in public housing don't want this. That means it should not go through. There has been zero resident engagement around this. The residents are speaking. Listen to them.
Thank you. We will call our next two speakers via Zoom, Polly Spain, followed by Taida Marson. Do we have Polly Spain?
Hello. Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
We'll take you next. Please proceed. Please proceed with sharing your comment.
Okay. My name is Polly Spain. I'm a resident at Westside Urban Renewal, 120 West 94th Street. So I want to thank you for putting this forum together. I have two questions. I did read the information packet that was sent regarding the Preservation Trust, and for what I read, there is only 25,000 units that would be allocated for trust status. So can you explain how that would be broken down? Will that be 5,000 units per borough allocated? And my next question is, what happens to the rest of the NYCHA portfolio that are not included in RAD, PACT, or the trust portfolios? You can respond here, or you can respond, you have my contact information.
Thank you for your comment. We are going to go back to Ms. Pamela Mondesi.
Good evening. To the day's table, Greg Russ and NYCHA staff and NYCHA residents. My name is Pamela Mondesi. I live in Ingersoll Houses in Brooklyn, 25 Monument Walk, Apartment 1G. I am disabled, legally blind, and they know that. This may sound a little personal, but in... As it being personal, it applies to a lot of people. Being disabled, I do have one thing to say, and being a senior, of which my management doesn't think I'm a senior, so she won't address me. She won't talk to me. Her name is Ms. Turner. She won't speak to me. She actually looked over me at a tenants' meeting, of which I am a part of, paying dues. And when I spoke, she said, oh, I'm getting to the seniors first. I said, well, I'm very sorry if I look good. I'm sorry. I earned every gray hair on top of my head, and I've been retired from the city of New York, of which I used to work for NYCHA when it was called HPD. I worked at 100 Gold Street and 2 Lafayette Street in personnel. So when I say this may reflect all of us, I'm not sure, but I've had problems. I've lived in two apartments while I was in my building. A 504, they gave me. You see, I'm sitting in this scooter. I'm not sitting in here for nothing. On the 6th of September, I will be in the hospital getting another surgery done. I am disabled, legally blind, and they ignore me, and Ms. Turner won't speak to no resident in the... And they want to talk to you over the window. You've got to spread your business. I refuse. I refuse. Ms. Dinkle, she says, she says, oh, it's COVID. I said, look, I'm sorry, I'm not talking to you over the loudspeaker, but they will not talk to you. But I have a lot of issues, and like you said, this may not be the forum for it, but I was living in a hotel for six months because my ceiling fell in my bathroom, and I'm still waiting for the... And I had to do my own glaze on my tub. Thanks to Mr. Dash, I hired people to do it. You wouldn't even glaze my tub.
That's not right.
Okay? And my time is almost up, but I got a lot and receipts and everything.
We will move to the next speakers via Zoom, Ms. Taida Marson, Michael Noble.
Mr. Noble, you're unmuted.
Yeah, thank you. My name is Mike Noble. I live in the Elliott Houses here in Manhattan, and I've heard everybody's comments and their fears about both the Housing Preservation Trust and the PAC, RAD conversion process. Let me just tell you that, to me, unlike what people have characterized Russ to be, I consider Greg Russ to be a hero. I was involved with Chelsea, NYCHA, the committees from day one, from October of 2019, and what we did was, we looked over everything, made our recommendations. We eventually agreed that, yes, the PAC conversion was appropriate for the Elliott Chelsea and the Fulton Houses, and as time has gone on, we've, you know, picked our developers or managers and all that business, and we finally got down to committees that selected the related companies, in essence, to do this PAC conversion here. And in the course of all that, we're now down to a few committees. And one of the ones that I'm on is the Management Securities, Management and Safety Security Committee. We've got a meeting tomorrow, by the way, and I can tell you that everything that's happened with these developers, and Essence in particular, is way beyond anyone's expectations. What we expect to get here is far beyond what was proposed to us, and I can tell you, it's a good, it's a good thing for everyone. And when you consider the fact that the money for all this, you know, the repairs and everything else, wasn't coming from anywhere else. I mean, this was the best thing that could ever have happened to this development. So I just want to let people know that if it's done the right way, you don't have anything to fear. You're going to wind up way, way better than you can have ever imagined, and that's about it. I'm just telling you. It's been a great experience, and I look forward to my place changing, because where it stands right now is a pity. We haven't had a compactor for months and months, the intercom's broken for months and months, that kind of thing, you know? And I don't see that happening with the new management team. So that's about it. That's what I want to tell you.
Thank you. Thank you. Do we have phone number, last four digits, 0429? Please press star six to unmute yourself.
Yes, good evening. This is Mrs. Brown, and I'm now on the phone, and I want to thank you and the panel for the courtesy and kindness in allowing me to speak beyond the slotted time as a board member. Due to my disability, I suffer with traumatic brain injury. In reading the plan, there are several areas of confusion, lack of clarity, and more importantly, there are barriers that are currently in place that have stymie relationship-building, trust, if you will, between the residents and NYCHA. Last year, I asked the chair if he would recognize the resident leaders with a certificate, stipend, and/or celebration to thank them for their hard work in keeping their residents safe during the worst part of the pandemic. Is that going to happen? If not, why not? The concerns and need for clarification with the blueprint for change are, how is the blueprint trust going to prevent mismanagement, neglect, and/or corruption? Please list in steps. How did NYCHA engage, educate, and/or train the residents regarding the financials? For example, were the residents involved in the capital assessment needs decision? If so, provide the steps taken and names of the residents who participated from the beginning. NYCHA is slated to receive $3.4 billion in capital funds from state fiscal year 2024 and $2.8 billion in operating funds to address the operating deficits of $300 million annually. Is this money going to be used as seed money for tenant associations to start an RMC, Resident Management Corporation, and/or Section 3 resident-owned businesses? How much of this money would be used to address the work order backlog? How were these proposals and/or projects communicated to all of the residents? Would you consider putting this information on the reverse side of the rent statement and/or insert a page with bullet items of things to come and where one could find information on said topics? How is the trust going to work and/or benefit the residents without falling into the hands of private investors? Please provide steps. Who is going to protect the residents? Should it fall into foreclosure? I do not see leasehold protections. If there are leasehold protections, please explain what they are and how they will work by monitoring, oversight, and enforcement. If so, please provide process and steps. Please provide how many years of property management experience of the team who is going to be responsible for these tasks. What is being used as collateral? Are homes...
We will now call on the next four in-person speakers, Christina Chase Ravenswood, Precious White Wagner, Patricia Wilson, Cynthia Tibbs WSUR Brownstones.
Purple Test. Thank you.
My name is Cynthia Tibbs. I am the president of the Bussor Brownstones on the Upper West Side, in addition to being the second vice chair of the Manhattan South District Council of Presidents. I am here today to vote no on the Preservation Trust. The trust will allow NYCHA to secure $10 billion worth of debt through bonds without any real protections against foreclosure. Given NYCHA's current history of spending recklessly, unaccountability, even to the chair of the Housing Committee, why should they be allowed to take on so much debt? The trust also comes with the Section 18 demolition clause. The trust currently does not require for a physical needs assessment to be done before a development is allotted into this program. As different developments require different needs, there is no real way to track how much money will go into each one. The new board governing the trust will only have four resident seats out of a total of nine, ensuring tenants never have any true decision-making power. Since Cuomo worked at HUD, residents have been met with a pack of lies from Hope 6 up to the current obliteration of Section 9 through the RAD-PAC program and now the attempt to seal the deal with the Preservation Trust. Promises of better apartments have led to nothing but cheap cosmetic upgrades and the only ones benefiting are the pockets of the private management CEOs. Tenants have not only had their lives disrupted, many have gotten deathly ill behind these renovations. Not to mention people are no longer permitted to be transferred into other developments, which is causing victims of domestic violence, seniors and the disabled to be left permanently sealed by the hip in these apartments regardless what their circumstances are. Where will our elected officials be if this all goes bad? Onto their next positions while NYCHA sits back with no responsibility as usual? Red flags have been associated with NYCHA for decades. We have a federal monitor that makes over $500 an hour with no real power and no purpose under Section 8. I humbly ask that all of you up there today, look into your conscience and remember that every unit that gets placed into the Preservation Trust occupies human lives. I'mma repeat that, human lives. We are not cattle. We are not cattle that should be shuffled from one pen to another, ultimately leading us to the slaughterhouse. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'm told that we have Loretta Humphrey. Ready to speak?
Good evening. Greetings, everyone. Good evening, my comrades in the fight. My name is Loretta Humphrey. I am a FHA resident. These homes, these are private homes that are managed by the New York City Housing Authority. A plan was put in place and many residents were left out. Let me also say that I am against the trust. I stand with, um, with my fellow residents against this trust. I did read it. But I'm here tonight on behalf of the FHA residents. They have not had their due process. You closed the program in 2022, leaving out over 100 residents who want their homes. A plan has to be put in place. Furthermore, the FHA residents have been denied the opportunity to put together a residence association. We have been neglected. I've been in my house almost 40 years. It's paid for. I added it up. It's almost a million dollars. Cause I pay $2,000 a month now. So I am, I'm asking the board, I'm asking Mr. Russ, please put the FHA residents back in the plan. I've spoke to my elected officials. I am looking for the FHA residents to be back in the plan. I want my home. I have three generations in my home. Yes, the neighbor, my good friend, Ms. Hardy is 86 years old. These tenants, these residents have died off waiting for their homes. It's not right. Ms. Elizabeth Hardy is 86 years old. She was denied the opportunity, uh, to get her home. She wants her home. Now, I am, I'm asking for a comprehensive pro- program for the FHA residents. I'm asking that the board that's here, you said it was a nine-seat board and only four representatives from the, from NYCHA would be on the board. That's an uneven balance. And I'm looking for a FHA resident to be on this board. There's nobody to speak, to speak for us. I am also the civic president, founder and president of the Greater Triangular Civic Association. I am with the veterans and residents of Southeast Queens. I am a part of Community Board 12. We want our homes. I maintain my home. I did my own bathroom because NYCHA neglected to do them. I was told by management and by the ma- maintenance department that they're not going to take it. This was in the past. You're doing a better job now. And the, yeah, I gotta give them some credit. That, that they want these houses to become dilapidated and uninhabitable and then throw you out. And that's not, that's, come on. How do you treat people? How do you treat human beings like that? With families, with babies, with children, with grandmothers?
Thank you. Next, we will have Councilmember Gail Brewer via Zoom.
Okay. Thank you very much to, um, Mike, can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed with your comment.
Thank you very much. I am Gail Brewer and the city council member for District 6 on the Upper West Side. And I want to thank the chair and the board. I've got three or four things to say. First of all, lead paint. Now, I know that to the credit of NYCHA, uh, perhaps you've done more even in the private sector, but not one child should be dealing with lead paint poisoning, not one. And I know that to the credit of the Health Department, uh, there is a different, uh, blood milgram. You can have less so that you could in fact include more children who would have lead poisoning. For God's sake, number one on your agenda should be sure that nobody ends up with lead paint poisoning. Number two, I've heard a lot about PACT-RAD, about the trust and of course about Section 9. I want to say as a Manhattan Borough President, you heard earlier about Elliott, um, and Chelsea, Chelsea Elliott and Fulton. That's a unique situation. The chair, myself, first deputies, residents. We sat there for two years. No other development did that. Every other development should do that if PACT-RAD is to be enforced. Um, I'm dealing now with Wise Towers, which is a development on 90th Street. With all due respect, uh, I don't believe that that process took place there. And I'm concerned that it is not going as well as it should. Elevator issues, repair issues, uh, management not answering phone calls, et cetera. That is not how PACT-RAD should work. It only works if you have that kind of planning. So please don't ever do it unless there's total resident input. I do want to talk about the trust. I think Cynthia Tibbs mentioned some of the issues. It's the issues of the debt. It's the issues of the demolition clause. It's not clear. It's the, if, if, when the, uh, you know, people are concerned if Section 9 goes away, what guarantees do we have that Section 8 doesn't go away? I understand that it is a concept that should work, but it has a whole lot of questions that have to be answered. I do want to thank the, uh, NYCHA for their clean heat for all challenge. That is going well. I also want to say be careful of the batteries and the e-bikes. We've had press conferences with NYCHA. We don't want anybody else to get killed. We do, people, people have to have their bikes and they have to have their batteries. So they should not be thrown out. So we have to come up with some kind of a task force that works for everyone, win-win. And we have some ideas how to do that. And finally, um, the Affordable Connectivity Program that MAE gets residents to enroll so that they cannot have to deal with the diesel divide is incredibly important for NYCHA to roll out. I know that, uh, thanks to Julie Menon is taking place in Stanley Isaacs, but it needs to be everywhere. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councilmember. We will call the next two speakers via Zoom. Do we have any of that Diaz? Last name Diaz. Any vet? Do we have Vanessa Thill?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed with your comment.
Great. Um, my name is Vanessa Thill. I am not a resident of public housing, um, but I'm an ally. And there are many of us who are very focused on this issue. Um, I'm testifying today to reject this annual plan. Um, specifically, um, you know, we've talked about a number of reasons, but there are some specifics in the plan that I wanted to point to. I'm concerned that there's an increase of almost $100 million between the capital fund grant noted in the annual plan versus the significant amendment. Um, you'll find this on page 44. Um, I do not trust NYCHA or believe that the financial estimates that they provided can be trusted. Um, there's another issue on page 20. NYCHA notes that 175 million will be used under the reimbursement to operate fee category. This significant fee is not found in the annual plan. This expenditure is not explained by NYCHA. And this is the biggest investment in the section, um, on page 20. So NYCHA must explain what this fee will be used for before presenting it for adoption. Um, there are a number of other issues. Um, they have not clarified what relocation funds will be used for. Um, they don't, you know, as others have touched on. And, um, there has really not been adequate outreach. I've been, um, speaking with tenants at a number of developments over the past month. Most people have no idea that this is even going on. And so, um, another really important thing is the, um, quorum that folks have brought up, um, as far as, you know, we need, we demand that 75% of tenants at each complex agree on one solution before it is adopted by the entire complex. Um, so, um, um, yeah, so I wanted to also echo that, um, you know, say Section 9 has been lobbying um, and has gotten many meetings with, um, with electeds. And really the funding for this, for the trust is coming through the Section 8 vouchers that they, we don't have the money for that either. So people saying, oh, this is the only money that you're gonna get. Um, that's really inaccurate because it's also coming from, um, the federal government. Um, so whether it's Section 9 or Section 8, um, why would we give up on Section 9? You know, um, there's really no reason to do it. So that is, um, what I'd like to add. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you. We will now call the next four in-person speakers. Chantel Legree Farragut. John Norvell Lincoln. Prinsella Jamerson Milbrook. Manny Martinez, South Jamaica. We have Ms. Jamerson. Okay, we'll take Prinsella Jamerson followed by Manny Martinez.
Good evening. My name is Prinsella Jamerson. I'm from Milbrook Houses. I have to say I reject this annual plan amendment because NYCHA did not adequately engage or educate our tenants. The blueprint plan repeatedly states that residents need to be more involved in the making decisions related to the capital assessment needs. This is not happening. This significant amendment was very difficult for the residents to understand. Residents don't understand the implications of this significant plan. The trust will have the authority to take on debt using our home as collateral. The trust's last relation recently adopt, adopted in Albany does not require an independent physical need assessment at each campus. This means we will have to vote on the trust without understanding the physical reality of our development phase. It is imperative that NYCHA conduct a physical need assessment of each development before we are asked to vote on the trust. NYCHA needs to speak to how residents can be moved from their apartments from six months to five years depending on the extent of the repairs that are needed in each unit. We need to know where the people are to go when this takes place. Are anything going to be put in writing to make sure that people get back in their homes after the completion of the units being repaired? When, um, Mr. Greg Russ was speaking, he stated that NYCHA is public, but he also stated that it is private. How is this, this, how, what is this, what does this mean, Mr. Russ? When you state that it's public, but it's also private? And how are we going to, for the residents that make a whole lot of subsidies rather, that get paid a lot, how are they going to be able to stay in these units once they become under Section 8? A lot of people won't be able to afford to stay because the subsidies will change for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Manny Martinez, South Jamaica.
Okay, uh, good evening. Good evening to the panel and to my family of neighbors here who came out to talk, and speak against this trust. And I have concerns about this trust. Um, I'm not in favor of this trust. My concerns is when you tell us that for us to get better homes is going to be, the path to better homes is going to be walked on our backs because we can't get our rights now under Section 9 respected, but we're gonna expect it to be happened under Section 8. I also have a problem with the fact that they maneuver and manipulate our residents, our resident councils, the way that they engage with us, how they manufacture consent, something that the others, something that Ms. Jamerson was speaking to right now about public and private, how the trust is public and private. And I know everybody received a booklet that said the New York City Public Housing Preservation Trust. But that is a misnomer. It's false. It's not public housing. Not in the sense of HUD, Section 9 public housing. It's public housing in the sense that it is owned by a public entity, but it's not public housing. You tell us that you're going to carry over our rights of 964 and of Section 3. And Section 3 is worth billions to our community. But if you can't respect it now when it's active under the federal government, why would we expect you to represent? would we expect you to represent that when it's just you upholding it? We right now have a redist, a potential redistribution of almost eight billion dollars under section three. Seventy-two thousand people unemployed in public housing that could use those opportunities, but we have contractors coming into our communities with forty, fifty, sixty million dollar contracts and not giving us no training, not giving us the employment, and definitely not contracting with us. They actually gave a report to HUD saying zero percent of subcontracting and they accepted it. In the plan itself, there's a part of, it's a part focused on affirmatively furthering fair housing. And in there, they just checked off the boxes, oh, we dealt with this many seniors and we dealt with this many, uh, this and that, nothing of significance. But when we, when we dig into how NICA is engaging with us and the residents and their representation, how they still have their hand on the scale, how they're still manipulating who is at the table because they're scared. Like we're gonna change this around? That's a problem. Until we can get this right here on this side, we can't listen to nothing that you got for us on that other side. God bless you all. Take care.
Thank you. We will now move on to the next two speakers via Zoom. Juretta Davis, followed by Tonja Richardson. Do we have Juretta Davis on Zoom? Good evening. Ms. Davis is on Zoom. Ms. Davis, you've been unmuted. Please ask your question. Ms. Davis, please proceed, sharing your comment. Do we have Tonja Richardson? We will move on to the next four in-person speakers. Donna Woody.
Hi, yeah, NICA requires to have interpreters. Uh, when I get appointments mailed to me, I go to the office to speak to them and then I ask them, can I get an interpreter? And no, they say no, I need an interpreter to come because of ADA law. It's very important to have an interpreter. I'm complaining about this. I go home and clean and then somebody knocks on my door, somebody's ringing my doorbell. I'm deaf. I'm trying to clean, keep the place clean and close the door. Then again, I'm cleaning and cleaning and cleaning in the hallway because nobody's respecting the hallway and I'm constantly cleaning the hallway instead. You know, it's, I'm not, it's not my responsibility. Why do I feel like I have to clean everything? It's not right for the government's not helping me. And then sometimes I call to ask if they can come and clean up the roaches or fix something in my home. I call three, four, or five times, ask them to come clean up, and then they don't show for like a month, two months and a half. And then any repairs, they don't show up. I'm really upset. I'm really frustrated. I really need an interpreter. I'm very frustrated. I, I need some advocacy for me as a deaf person to have an interpreter. It's not fair that a lot of the other spoken languages, they get interpreters, but I don't get an interpreter. Thank you very much. Have a nice day.
Thank you. Willie M. Lewis, St. Nicholas Houses, followed by Lisa Kenner, Van Dyke Houses.
Good evening. I gotta take this look. Good evening. My name is Lisa Kenner. I am a resident of Van Dyke, but I'm also the TA president. And I just was voted as the second vice chair of Brooklyn East. A lot of them don't know that. But before I want to say anything, I brought forty residents with me because I wanted them to see what goes on here. And I want them to know who the players are because I'm not gonna be here forever. So I want to pass on what I know. Um, one thing I want to say is I really don't understand about the trust because I look at it saying, God, we trust. And I've been around for a while. I've been thinking about Ms. Lamb, James, um, John Johnson, Ms. Kitchen. These are people that came before me and I watched them get up and speak and think. So I'm saying, well, you gotta trust somebody. But how can you trust somebody when they, they not doing what they supposed to do now? You know, they say, well, housing would keep it and we'll keep the same caretakers. Caretakers ain't doing what they supposed to do. I know they ain't doing what they supposed to do where I live at. And you say something and it still don't get, you can't train people on a Zoom. They got to get a mop and a broom in person. You know, I know Prospect Plaza told people they was gonna be able to come back. Those people never came back. You know, and Mr. Russ know, I've been on every meeting when it was on trust, trying to understand this so I could pass on the, pass on the knowledge. I'm not knocking him because that's his job, but it's our job to stand up and say enough is enough. We want to hear the truth. You know, I, I seen a lot of people come and go. I don't know, none of y'all up on the panel except for maybe Mr. Walton, that's you? How you doing? I just met him. He's the new deputy, deputy general manager. I met him. He seemed like he gonna be a decent person, but you know, I got to, you know, he could know he got show and prove. But I just want to say that the people that I brought here, I hope that they understand and they ask questions. And that is the reason I tell people about coming to meetings, not to come to see me, but come to get educated. Thank you.
Thank you. Christina Chase.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Willie M. Lewis. I'm a resident of St. Nicholas Houses. I'm also the vice president. And I'm here today to have some concerns. The first one that we've all heard talked about this evening was the Preservation Trust. I have reservations about it also. The first reservation I have about it is that I just want to say we are section nine and a lot of the residents are very concerned about the Preservation Trust and it's going to be turned into section eight. And we know the ramifications of some of the things in section eight. What I would like to say is that I think that someone from NICA should come to all of the residents that are involved in this and explain the PAC, the RAD, the Preservation Trust, because there's a vote also that's concerning this Preservation Trust. You can either opt in or opt out. But I think what we should do and what, uh, should be done is to explain the three different categories to all of the residents that are gonna be involved in this and they will have a better understanding. The next thing I want to say is the e-bikes. We don't want to wait until a disaster happens like it did up in the Bronx when seventeen people were killed, nine of them were children. We have, even in my development, in my building, Mr. Russ, not only the e-bikes, but we have some residents in there that's got a motorcycle in the damn apartment. Excuse my expression, but I'm very frustrated about that, you know? I mean, come on. I understand that people have to make a living with the e-bikes. And I want to say to the panel that don't wait till something happened. We don't want to react. We need to do this as soon as possible with the e-bikes. Find somewhere where they can be parked, also to be charged. I'm not trying to take anybody's livelihood away from them, but at the same time, we want to reserve life. Okay? I'm just saying. Thank you very much. And these are my concerns and I hope that they will be taken into considerations. Thank you.
Thank you. Christina Chase. Okay, we'll move on. She's on Zoom? Okay, Christina.
Hello.
Proceed.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
Thank you. Um, well, hi, I'm, um, from Ravenswood Houses where I'm the second vice president and I'm also a member of safe section nine, RPPH, and Justice for All Coalition. I'm sad I can't be with you all in person tonight. I'm sick at home with COVID. And although I'm unwell right now, I had to come to voice my dissent. The current plan and trust will further privatize our public assets, specifically our homes. I've been here in Ravenswood for twenty years and lived in Queensbridge and Astoria Houses years prior. Before moving into public housing, at six years old, my mother and I experienced housing insecurity. It is because of public housing under section nine regulations that I've been able to truly understand the meaning of both housing stability and community. It scares me that I may be the last generation to know this. Greg Russ's track record with other PHAs have rendered families homeless and still fighting for their right to return across the country. I have no doubt that we will experience the same if NICA follows through with this plan and with the trust. Although NICA asserts that they are engaging residents, it is clear that many still do not know what is happening and the implications through the many conversations I've had with tenants. If we are expected to vote on these plans, we must all be informed and aim for at least seventy-five percent of tenants at each development to agree on a solution before it is adopted by the entire complex, including the option to stay fully public under section nine with the fulfillment of the renovations we deserve. Each development should have been allowed to review the proposal and provide meaningful input. I'm concerned that NICA is choosing to starve developments and lengthen the time we spend living in unsafe conditions to justify these changes. And the significant amendment investments in each development fluctuate from zero dollars in some years to millions in the next. I disagree with this approach. I believe funds should be invested every year in every development. Despite public perception, our communities are full of love, strength, compassion, and joy. I'm twenty weeks pregnant now and I refuse to let anyone threaten my community, my housing, and my family. I love public housing so much and even though no one loves this back, we love each other and we support each other and we all deserve to have houses under current regulations. We say no to these plans because they are not inclusive of us now or of our futures. Thank you.
Thank you. The next two speakers via Zoom. Dana Eldon.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed with your comment.
Uh, good evening to everyone, especially my comrades in the struggle. Uh, my name is Dana Eldon. I'm president of St. Mary's Park Houses, resident council. I'm also the secretary for the South Bronx District. And I would like to read some of what I've said in. Um, as an active resident council leader, I have observed this process of overriding the HUD nine sixty-four rules and regulations since July twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty. I have read what NICA has produced on paper, shared on Zoom meetings, and now mailed an elaborate magazine production to each and every resident citywide. I have seen how NICA has spent millions in salaries as well as how they have failed to produce at New York City City Council hearings and State Assembly hearings the budget allocated to NICA as well as the spending plan and/or history of this NICA agency. I've seen how its chairman has taken components from the blueprint and implemented them into active changes that are now a part of the NICA portfolio. As a resident leader, I am appalled at how we, the residents, have been bullied into an attempt to believe that the trust will benefit the residents of NICA without the full account that many of us may be in jeopardy of losing our homes. How is it that you want us to believe that if someone invests in this trust, which will be used for many units within NICA, that those investors are doing this for their health? The reality is that they want to return on their investments. We also know that NICA has a history of late payments on their accounts with vendors and contractors. So what happens when a loan from the trust is late on payment to the investors? What happens when NICA is negligent? Who suffers from this kind of activity that they have continued to wrap the years? We are, the renters. What kind of bargaining will take place when NICA is in default on these loans? Will they discover that, that a proposal for demolition is brought to the table? We all know that the land is the true value to NICA's portfolio. Well, we know that the buildings and the developments like my own are in jeopardy, especially since NICA hasn't repaired roofs, pipes, electrical lines, brickwork, et cetera, for over forty years. Let's not forget, my residents, my development wasn't even on the application until the nineteen eighties because those people applying for housing here had to have an elevated income to be considered as a resident here. So from nineteen fifty-eight to nineteen eighty-two, these people were doctors, lawyers, forensics, fire, teaching, and even a.
We will now call the next two in-person speakers. Margaret Masick, followed by Tiara Williams, local seventy-nine laborers.
Yes, um, thank you for letting me speak. My name is Margaret Masick. I'm from Oceanside in Far Rockaway. But I just want to say this, um, forum is more for you than it is for us. You know, it's just there to say that we have a quota that we spoke to the residents. You spoke to us. We have questions you cannot even answer or won't even answer. You know, we have a lot of questions. Who's gonna sit down and speak, and speak to us and answer those questions? We had, I'm also a TA president, and we had the president's meeting. The man that was facilitating the meeting, he couldn't even answer all the questions. You know, that's not fair. If you have a conversation, it's only going one way. You know, you say that the trust lets the residents speak and be heard. Okay, when we're heard, what are you doing about what you hear? You know, uh-uh. That's not right. Okay, and then also like somebody said, the culture of NICA is disrespecting the tenants. You know, yes, you do have some clients that throw garbage out the window or whatever, but that's only one percent of us. Most of us are working people, decent people, you know, have jobs and that medium income you have, they don't show the people with the good jobs. They just mesh us all together and say it's five hundred dollars rent. No, people are paying two thousand, more than two thousand. Y'all don't put those people on there. How, okay, I hate to say it, but you call this the trust. You know, we ain't never trust a charm. You know we ain't never trusted y'all. You know, sorry. You know, but we need to build a culture of trust where you have working groups, where when we sit at the table, you hear what we say. You take stock of what we say, and then you do something about it. Not go in the back room, make all these plans, and then come out and say, this is it. Where was we in that? You know, where were we in that? I was waiting for information for a long time. Now you're just rushing, rushing, rushing. We need time to absorb. Like I said, we need time to hear. And also the trust, you saying you bringing NCHA people over, keeping the same old worker. Is it the same old raggedy workers that don't mop? You know, as the president, people coming to me, this one ain't mopped, this thing ain't. I have to do emails all over the place just to get somebody to mop and clean? And is the trust going to be the same way? More money with raggedy workers ain't doing nothing. Please start listening to us and let us talk a dialogue, not one way. Thank you.
Thank you. Tiara Williams of Local 79 Laborers.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tiara Williams. I'm an old organizer with Local 79. And initially, I came here to support the NCHA trust. Hear me out before y'all boo me. I'm 33 and respectful of my elders and the people who are here. And I feel like I am a representation of the future, not just my local, right? And I came here in support of it because I control the Section 3 list at my job with Local 79, where we bring in people from NCHA and we bring them into the local. And we have life-changing experiences because they made more money than they have ever made in their life. Some of them are making more money than their parents, right? Now, I come here today to say that, yes, I'm in favor of the trust because in NCHA there's no funding, right? And when they build on their projects and they try to fix your projects, I can guarantee a safe workplace for the people and that it be done right. Now, on the other side, we got RAD. We don't want that. We don't have no, the option for me, RAD is not an option for me, right? And I feel like, me being 33, I've been miseducated in a lot of things, right? So come here is the first step of you being educated, right? So some of us have mentioned things that, and mixed the NCHA trust with RAD. We have mixed NCHA with Mitchell the Lama. Before you speak, you should be able to have facts to back that up. And if you feel like that, you need to do your research over again, because some things that you have mentioned here do not apply to the NCHA trust, right? No argument, I've been uneducated in my life as a person and as a worker, right? So it also starts with you. If something that you can't read, find somebody that can help you read it if you feel like you don't have no help somewhere else. There's always someplace that you can, hold on, wait, relax. I'm, I hear you, I hear what you're saying. I'm not going anywhere. I'm telling you, as a 33-year-old resident of New York City, period, I'm telling you that if you cannot read something, I'm telling you that you can reach, get no argument. You can cut my mic, that's fine. I have 50 seconds. I am in favor of the NCHA trust. And as adults, we should conduct ourselves as adults. And if you ever need help with the education of what NCHA trust is versus RAD and verse of NCHA, that's what I'm, I'm trying to tell you that I'm trying to help you save your homes. Do you want your home the way it is now? Do you want your home in the way, how you know, did I tell you where I live? Do you want your homes the way it is now? Do you want the funding? Okay, your house is beautiful, as a lot of people here whose houses are not beautiful. And I hope that you guys find a little ground here. And if you want education, you can definitely come to me. Y'all enjoy your evening.
Thank you. Thank you. We will move on to the next three speakers via Zoom. Varnell Neville.
It's on?
Can we ensure the mic is on on the stage?
Is it, is it on? It's not on yet.
Can we have the mic on the stage on, please?
Yeah, I just want to say that we have to listen. We can't hear what's being said. And it would be, it would be appreciated if you could let the speaker speak, even if they don't agree with your position. So all I'm asking for, all I'm asking for from the audience is to let them have their chance as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm just asking for some openness to have other ideas in the room, so.
Thank you. Let us move on and continue so we can hear comments from the other residents that have joined in. We will now hear from Varnell Neville via Zoom. Varnell Neville. Okay, we'll move on to Nigel Dupree via Zoom.
Hello, can you hear me?
We hear you. Please proceed with your comment.
All right, thank you. My name is Nigel Dupree. I'm from Brook Ellen Projects in Canarsie. Lately, we had a heavy take in gun violence. And I feel like the cause of that is because of our community center that we have at the moment has not been repaired since the, our community center was built in a Truman era. And the neighborhoods around our community center, like Bayview and Glenwood, has, has new community centers. With having a community center that we have, we don't have a lot of program for the kids. We can't keep a lot of kids out of the street. The community center we have now, we only have one program at a time. We don't have a lot of things for the seniors to do. So that's just my concern. I understand everybody concerned here. And I hope we get a resolution and everybody could keep their apartment. And just thank you for letting me speak, and everybody have a great day.
Thank you. Tasha Melvin via Zoom. Do we have Tasha Melvin?
Yes, can y'all hear me?
Please proceed with your comment.
Hi, how you doing? I'm a regular Section 8 voucher holder. I really don't understand what's going on. From my perspective, if y'all planning on building a new housing, because I had Section 8 for 28 years, and you know, I'm not a CEO or nothing, none of that. And what got me frustrated with Section 8, I was working. Amazon doing good. I say, you know, let me get off of welfare, get a job, start working, me and my son, you know, try to better myself. I start working. I have seven kids, mind you, oldest 28, youngest is 13. I said, let me get a job. I moved out the Bronx because the Bronx was no good for my kids. I said, let me move to Staten Island, and I found me a job, got me a job, working. Soon as I start working, boom, my Section 8 rent goes up to $2,363. How and why? Why and how? So I had to deliberately stop working at this moment. I can show you, I have no milk, no juice, no soap, nothing, nothing. So I don't know, is it because what's new in office or what the situation is? But I say no to whatever's going on, because I enjoy my Section 8 apartment that I'm in now. But right about now, I'm very frustrated, stressed out, can't eat, can't nothing, because my rent is high. How? There's seven people on my Section 8 voucher. Why is it that me and my son get a job, the rent is $2,363, and only the state is paying $46? What is $46 that the state, the government is paying? Y'all have more money than me. I had to stop working because I can't afford to pay that rent. I have to pay gas, I have to pay rent, I have to pay light. Where does Section 8 voucher come, where do we come in at? They say low income. I don't see low income. I see high income, and I'm poor. I don't have a job. I'm not a CEO. I'm not this, I'm not that. I'm just a regular Section 8 voucher holder. So what is it for us? What kind of plan is it going to be for us to protect us? Right about now, my landlord want to kick me out because I owe $10,000 because I couldn't pay the $2,363 I was in rent a month, and I just started working. So I don't understand. What is it benefiting us? What is it going to do for us? They say low income. I don't see where I'm coming in low income. I got a job, tried to better myself, nothing. Not, and what I'm hearing, I've been seeing a lot of housings messed up for years. Now, if y'all going to come in and fix the housing, I'm all for it. I don't live in housing. I'm a Section 8. I live in regular building. But these houses been messed up for years, years. You got pipes here, pipes there, this, that, that should have been fixed up years ago. Years ago.
Thank you.
It's not now that people have been living in there for like, thank you.
We will take the next two in-person speakers, Jose Santiago, Local 79, and Joelle Cooperman of Envy Justice Initiative. Jose Santiago, followed by Joelle Cooperman.
How you doing? My name is Jose Santiago. I live in LaGuardia Houses. I'm also a Section 3 worker for Local 79. I'm for the trust. I believe it will bring a lot of work to the community. Also, I've been in the union for 12 years now. And every job I've had, I've worked in a development. And not for nothing, I pick up everybody's garbage, right? Your NCHA residents do not respect your neighborhoods. Come on. You guys could say 1% of you guys are clean, but, come on. Pampers. Pampers, bottles, knives. I've seen tasers thrown out the window. I had stuff thrown at me out the window. And I'm cleaning up your neighborhoods. What's going on with that? We got to do better. We got to show them better. That's the problem. You guys got to show these people better. Show them we can have nice neighborhoods. We can keep up with a good upkeep of the neighborhood. But if they walk into our neighborhoods and seeing everything's dirty, everything is dirty. Right now, I'm working in white women houses. Every single day is dirty, every single day. You guys don't respect your neighborhood. How do you expect anybody else to respect your neighborhood, or in that case, just to respect you? Come on. It's the truth. You could boo me all you want, but it's the truth. When you go home, go look at all the dirt on the ground and ask yourself, who threw it on the ground? The residents. Come on, man. Come on, man. That has nothing to do with anything. That's what I'm talking about right now. But, you know, it's very, it's just, all I'm saying is, 12 years I've been here, working in the union, and it's very disappointing. It's very disappointing to see that there's no change as far as the residents caring for their neighborhood. Dogs taking crabs. Does anybody pick up after them? No. Come on. They put the posters. They put the posters up for everybody. They let everybody know, pick up after your dogs. Anybody does it? No. Don't throw, thank God you do. God bless you for doing that. But come on, everybody, we got to do better, man. Seriously, equally, show them that we can do better. Make your neighborhoods look a little bit cleaner, that's all. Pick up after yourselves. Use the garbage in your house instead of throwing it out the window.
Thank you. We will call the next two in-person speakers, Sheila Vivian and Shanta Alston. Sheila Vivian of Millbrook. Sheila Vivian of Millbrook.
Joel Cooperman, you called me.
Okay, we will move back to Joel Cooperman. Please proceed.
Good evening. I'm Joel Cooperman from the Environmental Justice Initiative, the National Lawyers Guild Environmental Justice Committee. And I want to point out that it was 21 years ago, I spoke here at the same mic to a group of city and state officials regarding 9/11. This area is in the bad zone. We were told by the city and the state that the air was clean and safe to go back. And now I've become counsel to the residents of Alfred E. Smith Houses. That place has still not been cleaned. Not only are they in the World Trade Center dust sector, they got hit by Hurricane Sandy. So they got hit with more sediments, more toxins, and the like. And the trouble is that the feds came along and gave $65 million for a renovation that was totally against the rules, laws, and public health considerations. We approached NCHA over and over again to show that there was rules that were being broken, especially the fact that there was dust from the construction that was uncovered, that was rising in the wind and going into people's lungs. I worked with the lawyers at Flint, and what we got out of Flint was that the dust exposure is worse in the summer. So that's not just the dust, it's the lead that's there. And NCHA has not reprimanded any of the contractors that are there. I just want to quote also from Harvard, "A slight exposure, increase in exposure to PM 2.5", that's the small dust, "leads to a major increase in COVID death." So now this dust exposure isn't just nuisance, it's not people's sheets and just inconvenience. We're talking about life and death, and yet NCHA is not enforcing all these laws. Whistleblowers are coming to me. The regulations to keep the dust down, when they're doing asbestos work, it's going up. But also, I've been experienced with many, many things. We stopped the city's $80 million bad spray contract because they were not following labor laws. There's something called the bad actor policy, which NCHA does not follow. What concerns me as an environmental lawyer is that the trust is going to make things even worse because you can have less controls over the managers that you're giving this land to. The city is owed $1 billion and a half in uncollected fines from bad contractors and landlords. You should check before you sign over management to these houses how much money these people owe to the city and to the residents that were here. So part of the problem is that you're pushing this down the line, giving it to people who have proven bad track records.
Thank you. Please note, we have nine minutes remaining. We will take the last three speakers. The next speaker is joining via Zoom, Diana Blackwell.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for this important meeting. And I'd like to first express my concern about how these meetings are scheduled. I'm at this very moment, sitting in my RAD Town Hall meeting, which creates a conflict of interest. Some of our people actually wanted to be on this meeting tonight. Some actually came looking for it and tried to make it down to the meeting, but they needed to be here also. So I do question how these meetings are being scheduled. This way, I just want you to know, we are unable to give 100% attention to both meetings, so please remember that. Regarding the trust, I would like to ask, having the option to choose what will be the role of the trust as it pertains to us remaining part of NCHA, that is not clear. I do understand that going forward with the trust, that the residents will be able to vote on either trust or RAD. that the residents will be able to vote on either trust or RAD or whatever it is. Please make sure that we would understand exactly how this is to be done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker joined by Zoom is Bernadette McNear.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed with your comment.
Good evening, thank you all. I just want to say, I want to speak as far as being a resident. When I moved into NITIA, I was ten years old. I stand here today speaking of a person in mature age, about to turn sixty. If you boil your fist, that's what the holes look like when I moved in. Now, I'm a grandmother, and the holes that were fist-sized are now tunnels. So I'm all for remedies to get things fixed because it's not about me, it's about the future and what I leave behind for my grand. They're gonna need a place to live, and it needs to be a quality of life that they can sustain. Not beg and choose and look over your shoulder, look for the next rock to fall. Are we gonna have no water? If there's a remedy out there, let's at least look at it. The politicians didn't do anything to help you over the last fifty years. That's how we got into the predicament. All our acts is that NITIA sits with us, talks with us, present their ideas to us, and allow us to present our ideas. Right now, we're fighting and fussing amongst one another. And what are we fussing about? A trust, RAD, or nothing? And your hole's gonna go to get bigger. And if the holes get bigger, the buildings will fall, and then you all will be homeless. Then what's gonna happen then? Then who do we blame? And as far as I hear people talking about the quality of life in the buildings, and the young man was speaking about cleaning up the development, it is not the people who clean or the people who are coming into the system to do work for us, but it's the residents. It's not, it's not NITIA peeing in elevators. So we have to correct some in-house stuff before we go on the outside and start pointing some fingers. And every time something goes wrong, it's, "That's you, the people downtown. People downtown are peeing in elevators. People downtown are throwing it out the windows." We got to correct our own personal issues to get the respect that we deserve and demand. We have to do that. And then we can sit at the tables with the CEOs and the financial backers and say, "This is what we want." Because we look, we look just as good as those on Million Dollar Row on Fifty-seventh Street. We look just as good as those. And we uptown, we in Brooklyn, Bronx, Staten Island, we look just as good. But you know what? I'm gonna straighten up my time and put on my pros, and I'm gonna sit at that table with you and have that conversation. And I'm not gonna be up there yelling and screaming because if we yell and scream, we can't hear one another speak. We can't hear one another's ideas. Thank you.
Thank you. We will be taking our last comment from Sheila Vivian, Millbrook Houses. Shanta Austin? Isn't Ms. Vivian with us? Okay, we will take Shanta Austin. Please proceed.
Hello, good evening, everyone. I'm here coming from Astoria Houses, better known as the Mansions in Astoria Houses. I come as a community advocate. I am here on behalf of other residents and neighbors that I do work with in the community. We do not approve of the trust fund, the Persevation Trust Pact, RAD, whatever name you want to call it. I am a person that lives in Astoria Houses. I went without gas for eighty days. And I was able to, 180 days to correct that. And I was able to advocate and mobilize with people in my community to stand on the issue until we got the gas repaired. So I'm just coming with love, just to let you know, we want to see at the table. I'm here to inject the voices back into the community, the people. It's all about the people. We pay our rent on time. There's no problem when we paying our rent. So I'm coming with love and trying to get more understanding and try to get better solutions for the elderly, the young people, the children. We have so many residents. It's so populated, it's like so polluted now in Astoria Houses because we have all these high rises going up. What about the people that live on the land already? I've been living there since 1989, so you could do the math on that. This is my home, this is where I live. I'm representing my mom, she's a senior citizen, she's seventy-two years old. So I'm not standing here alone. I'm standing here on the behalf of Astoria, the community. And I am a face of the community. So please, take it into consideration to hear our voices. Let it be a two-way street where we could sit at the table as one. And then we can agree to disagree and bring the pros and cons together and come up with a better solution for the people. Let's bring it back to the people. Astoria Houses, better known as the projects. I reside, I reside as a violated young black woman, but I am educated because I'm here, and I'm not alone. There's many faces, we come in all different colors and shades. And we all just want to live. Public housing needs to stay public. We don't want it private. But if you want it private, it's fine. We could bring those, we could bring those decisions to the table, but you need to bring it back to the people. Let's put the CPR, let's put the CPR back into the veins of public housing. I'm just speaking out loud so you can hear me. When you're having your dinner tonight, understand what I'm trying to say. That's all I'm trying to say. I speak with the people. We are unified collective. I represent Welfare Rights Initiative.
Thank you. Thank you. As we conclude this evening's public hearing, let me take this opportunity to thank each and every one of you for being here with us tonight. Whether you are a NITIA resident, a board member, employee advocate, or elected official, we are all here for one collective reason. Over 160,000 apartments, homes, that we collectively desire to see valued, improved, and preserved. I want to acknowledge you and let you know that your voice and presence resonate. I encourage you to stay involved. Thank you, be well, and safe travels. Have a great night.